Since most people don't look at the screen, I will call to meet, uh, to order the regular meeting of the City Commission for Wednesday, January 21st, 2015. So, oh, okay. You want to call or all?
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here. I was just going to say I.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
If you'd please join me in rising in vials, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no ceremonies or proclamations, so we'll move straight into citizen comment. Let's just remind folks that citizens are allowed to speak up to three minutes, present information related to the city but not list it as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, you would have turned in a card to Katie Riggs. Do we have anybody? Obviously, we do. Tim Delano.
Uh, Tim Delano, resident of Oregon City. And I just, I want to pass on a compliment tonight, so get you all started out on a good thing that's happening. And I don't know if you saw this, it's about Public Works a little bit, so quick your ears off. John, yeah. Because I've worked, you know, in the public utility before. Anyway, back around the first week of January, I had a friend's house up on Kanema, up at the top of the hill up there, spouted a little bit of water. And I saw this post on, a post on Facebook. I'm coming here to share a Facebook post with you. He called it P U D, but Public Works came out. The neighbors reported the busted line around noon. A guy showed up about 12:30 and sprayed paint here and there and left. Two other guys in a small truck showed up soon after, and they were looking at stuff. Okay, stuff. A couple of small trucks showed up after that, and one of the earlier guys, uh, and they all looked again. The one guy left, and the others stayed and sort of did stuff. By 2 o'clock, a big, huge monster truck with every thing on it. Yeah, I'm editing for you. Showed up. Everybody took another look, and some guys went fussing around the trucks and came out with tools and head-to-toe mud gear and started in. They jackhammered and pavement, uh, the pavement and sucked everything into a big tank on the truck via monster tube and some kind of industrial arm vacuum cleaner thing while pressure washing material loose with another monster tool. Public Works sounds like a gas, buddy. All right. And this is water. I lost my place. Hold on now. So, the neighbors, I all came out one by one to slow them down. Uh, I guess you learn how to answer the same old tired questions people ask. They seemed nice and patient with everyone. It didn't slow them down at all. They were filling the hole with gravel. When a guy came up to our porch and unscrewed the head off the hose sprayer, um, turned off, uh, turned on the faucet. I asked him if I should turn off the faucet in the kitchen. Yes, they were going to flush dirt and stuff out of the line. 5:30, job done. I didn't see them repave the hole, but it's done. Oregon City, Oregon. I'll tell you, let's see. Tell you who doesn't seem to be, mm-hmm, around. I voted for our water department and library on account of good advice from a friend. And I agree with him that, uh, infrastructure is good. And I may report the guys on the crew for being awesome. It was followed by several other, you know, pats on the back and that kind of thing. Anyway, I guess I just share this because sometimes you don't get the love out there and the thank you notes and that kind of stuff. You're not one of my friends on Facebook, John, I wasn't trying to pass you away. Maybe after tonight you will. Good time, everybody. I wish you all luck.
Mr. Delano, I think the city has a Facebook page, don't we? If you could, if you could edit that and then send it to us with, with a G-rated version, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, I'll find some way to do that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. So, seeing no other public comments, we'll move on to number five, adoption of the agenda. Now, you say we aren't doing a motion and a vote on adoption of the agenda, so...
Still moved.
I think we're... Unless there is an objection, we are adopting the agenda and move on to item six, public hearings. So, 6A, PC 15 dash 147 is two appeals, a planning file, SP 14 dash 01 Beaver Creek Road, live work apartments. And, uh, this is Tony Conkle.
Live work.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. Before we start into this land use hearing, um, we are, because the, the, the issues are somewhat related, uh, we've, uh, we're going to combine the presentation for the, for the two appeals, appeal 1401 and 1402. We will be asking for separate votes, uh, once you get to that point after your deliberations on each of those items separately, based on the staff report and the recommendations and your deliberation, your decision as you move forward. Uh, so before we start, uh, this was a, uh, Community Development Director decision, so it was a type-two decision. This is the first evidentiary hearing, um, on the issue tonight, um, so there has been no other hearings. Planning Commission did not review this or anything like this, so you are the hearing body. It is a de novo hearing, um, and so before we get started, we'll have Ms. Richter, um, read some of our legalese.
Good evening. A public hearing on two land use appeals is scheduled for tonight. A staff report has been prepared and has been made available in advance of tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria along with the appeal, written comments, and input received through the public notification process. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law, the Oregon City Municipal Code. Uh, these procedure steps are shown on the chart right there. Uh, I'll tell you what they are when we get to the end of this. Anyone who wishes to speak in this appeal should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. For the public record, please begin all testimony, starting with your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criterion. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, please identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open. Any written materials mailed to the city staff during the time period which the record was opened will be placed in the record. They have to be received while the record is open. Written material submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. This includes PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in oral testimony. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of this hearing is closed. The City Commission makes a decision to which you disagree. Any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be judged appealable to the state Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised statute 197796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to a proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Now, we are going to open the record for Oregon City Files, number AP 14 dash 01 and 14 dash 02. A site plan and design review application for 120 apartment units. 59 live-work units on 9.7 acres of land, zone MUC1. I'm going to ask the commission now, do you have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare?
No.
No.
Have you visited the site?
No.
No.
Okay. We will now commence with the staff report. Uh, we're going to have the, it's up to the commission to decide if you want to set time limits on the testimony. The general time limits that we follow are 10 minutes for the appellant's, uh, 10 minutes for the applicant, uh, who is also an appellant in this case. Five minutes for representatives of recognized neighborhood associations, government agencies, or incorporated public interest organizations. Three minutes for individuals, and then five minutes for each appellate to rebut the testimony that was presented. I will leave it to your discretion to decide how you want to deal with those. Sort of, that's just our usual approach.
For now, let's proceed the way you guys have been doing, and then we'll maybe take three minutes and talk about that at the retreat as far as commission procedures.
Very well. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Conkle.
Okay, thank you. Evening, once again, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, the main part of, um, there was quite a bit of information that was provided to you in the site plan. It was very, a large document that came along with that. We're going to be primarily focusing on, uh, the, uh, the letter to the mayor and the commissioner from Ms. Richter dated January 15th, which was part of your exhibit. It's the staff report addressing the appeal, as well as a January 5th, 2015 memorandum from Ms. Froman Goodrich, uh, project engineer, city engineer, uh, for Oregon City, working through the infrastructure, uh, questions and concerns on the property. As Ms. Richter stated, uh, appeal 1401 was brought by the applicant, Beaver Creek Road LLC. Appeal 14 dash 02 is brought by Ms. Grazer Lindsay. And we're going to walk through this. I'm going to start with appeal 1402, Ms. Grazer Lindsay's, as I work through the staff report. Then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lewis to talk a little bit about, uh, appeal 1401, and then we'll, we'll wrap it up and answer any questions that you may have before, if you have them, before we move into, uh, the public testimony. Uh, this does show the location of the property. It's highlighted in blue on the screen in front of you. It's on Beaver Creek Road at the intersection of Myers, uh, just across from the Oregon City High School. Uh, the property's own mixed-use corridor one, it's approximately 9.7 acres. And one important distinction here, as many of you may recall, we did the Beaver Creek Road concept plan area in this area, and that was to do the concept planning work for properties that were annexed into the UGB in 2002 and 2004. This property has actually been inside the Oregon City UGB since nineteen, urban growth boundary since 1979. It had a Metro 2040 concept met designation of outer neighborhood, and it had a Oregon City Comprehensive Plan designation of low-density residential since that time. When we began the Beaver Creek Road concept planning process, because of its contiguous to the areas that were brought in in 2002 and 2004, we included in that concept planning work, even though this property was not required to go through Metro Title XI concept planning because it was brought into the UGB prior to that. Many of the arguments brought forward by Ms. Grazer Lindsay reference annexations, Luba decisions that deal with Beaver Creek Road concept plan, requirements for concept planning. So this, this point is important. Um, it's really the basis for why Metro Title XI concept planning is not required on this 9.7 acres because it was used in the UGB since 1979. It was also not identified on the 2040 map, as I stated earlier, as, uh, industrial, Title IV industrial land. This was identified as outer neighborhood. The Luba appeal concerning the Beaver Creek Road concept plan had to deal with the consistency of the concept plan as it relates to employment industrial lands with the 2040 map, which subsequently has been addressed and through the court system. Uh, the property was annexed into Oregon City in 2008. This decision was not appealed, and it was approved by the voters. The zone change was approved to mixed-use corridor one, as well as the comp plan designation in 2010. Once again, that decision was not appealed. Those, those are complete. Uh, the issues raised, uh, in appeal 1402, the first one deals with urbanization of the property, cannot precede adoption of a concept plan. And I'm going to summarize, um, there, there's quite a bit of information in the staff report, so I'm trying to summarize this down. Um, the, the actual issues raised, uh, in the appeal were, were extremely vague, uh, and so we tried to work with and tease out some of the, what we could tell from what was submitted. Uh, concerning the annexation, I talked, just talked quite a bit about the history of the site and why that's important because we believe that the argument is that, um, urbanization is not allowed because a concept plan has not been adopted. We believe that's incorrect. This was not required to go through Title XI concept planning on this property. We also, um, during the rezone, we worked with the property at that time to attach conditions of approval to the rezoning of the property and the comp plan amendment to include principles and guidelines from the Beaver Creek Road concept plan, such as floor area ratio minimums, height requirements that were identified through the concept planning process. So we believe that through that zoning, rezoning process, we were trying to implement the Beaver Creek concept plan, even though it was not, um, it was still being, um, reviewed, uh, at that point at the Land Use Board of Appeals. Um, we also, in the work that we're doing, is utilizing master plans that have been developed that reflect the assumptions of the concept plan areas that we've added. So, for example, Beaver Creek Road Park Place. So we've utilized our master plans for transportation, for water, for sewer, uh, that account for the impacts and the needs of these areas. So that the argument that this is piecemeal or the impacts to the entire UGB area that are slated for development aren't being considered are not accurate. The, the assumptions in the Beaver Creek Road concept plan have been included in, in our updated master plans, so we know what improvements are necessary to provide those services. Uh, the second issue is compliance with the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. Uh, as I started off the discussion, this is a limited land use decision. It's a, it's a type-two decision. Clear and objective standards are utilized. Um, our code is, implements our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan complies with the state planning rules and the state planning goals. So we rely on clear and objective standards in 1762 of the Oregon City Municipal Code, which is Site Plan Design Review. Unless we specifically reference the need or a comprehensive plan policy as part of the review process, we do not review type-two limited land use decisions against the comprehensive plan. Furthermore, when this property was, had the comp plan amendment as well as the zone change, the comprehensive plan policies were addressed during that review. They were approved with conditions by the City Commission, and there was no appeal arguing that those comprehensive plan policies were not met at that time. The third issue is the violation of findings from, from the annexation, uh, planning file AN 0702. This goes back to, uh, the, the first bullet as well concerning the timing of the urbanization of this land. Once again, going back to that this had been in the UGB since 1979. Metro Title XI, uh, concept planning is not required. Uh, the fourth, violation of the Land Use Board of Appeals remand of the Beaver Creek Road concept plan. And what we, what we, in the remand from the Land Use Board of Appeals, as I stated earlier, was dealing with, uh, Title IV significant industrial lands in the 2040 map that Metro used. This property was not designated as Title IV lands. It was designated as outer neighborhood. So that is not applicable. The Land Use Board of Appeals also did not address, uh, capacity issues, um, in their remand. They addressed the consistency of the adoption of the concept plan with the consistency of the 2040 map, both of which have been addressed, um, throughout the years. Number five is public facilities and services are not being coordinated nor adequate. As I stated earlier, we have demonstrated through the Oregon City Municipal Code, compliance with infrastructure. That includes transportation, water, sewer, storm. There were questions raised about the ability to provide, provide fire and police services. We have, um, documents submitted by both the police chief as well as Clackamas Fire District concerning their ability to serve the property. We've attached appropriate conditions to demonstrate adequacy of this development, to comply with our standards for, uh, infrastructure, uh, transportation, water, and sewer. The appellant has not proposed or provided any demonstration that those are not being met. Uh, the last issue is the application is incomplete. An incompleteness review is an administrative process that we go through. It's not a decision as to whether criteria are met or not. It simply states if the, it's required to turn in a site plan, is a site plan there or not? That is what a completeness review does. Through this process, uh, there were two public notices, uh, for comment. Uh, the app, the appellant did comment, um, throughout that process. And also, this hearing tonight, uh, is a de novo hearing, uh, of which, um, folks are free to bring forward issues. Uh, so, uh, we do not see any procedural errors, uh, nor how, um, the application completeness issue is, has not been met. Um, so with that, um, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Lewis, uh, to talk about, uh, the appeal 1401.
So, the appellant has, um, raised a couple of issues here. One is, we've, um, let's see, I would have preferred to have the map, but the next one, can we get to the map?
Yep.
So this map represents a, a excerpt from our sanitary sewer master plan, and it really laid out how we serve this area for, uh, in the future. Most of these lines that are shown in blue don't exist. Blue and purple are lines that, that aren't existent, but this was a layout for the area for how we would serve it in the future. This particular property happens to fall in the Beaver Creek Road drainage basin. But, uh, there's no, um, pipe in Beaver Creek Road. At this time, it's, it's down by the community college is the end of the pipe, so it's quite a distance, over a mile away. And what is near this property is a pipe that drains into a different basin, the Glen Oak Basin, and, uh, then essentially drains into a pipeline that runs down Highway 213 towards Treatment Plant. Um, the applicant, uh, proposed a cross-basin connection, so taking their flows instead of, uh, placing them in the basin that they were planned for, moving them into the Glen Oak Road Basin. And the problem that that creates for us is we, we, we know we have capacity concerns in the Glen Oak Road Basin. Concerns that we, uh, this is not an area that we identified in our sanitary sewer moratorium, but it came close. Um, we had, we have some definite concerns, and we've got some work to do in that drainage basin with some of our INI reduction. Um, if you'll notice, the dark orange line or red line on Highway, what's Highway 213, uh, does this pointer actually, is there a way to make it work so that it shows up on their screen?
I can do it. I have the technology.
So the dark bold line, uh, runs, uh...
Thank you, Dan.
Too many drivers.
Get it back to where you were.
Uh, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
So, uh, that line segment right there is actually, uh, has potential for, um, concerns like we have in some of the moratorium areas. There, there, it was close enough, and we felt like we had a new enough system out there that we've, we can make, we feel like we can make a difference with INI reduction in, in the basins that, that feed into that. But it still makes that basin very, very, um, concerning for us. Something that we, uh, don't have all the answers to yet, we just weren't ready to add it to a moratorium list. And so when, uh, when this developer proposed diverting flow from the Beaver Creek Basin into the Glen Oak Basin, uh, knowing the downstream capacity concerns, we have proposed that that, um, developer provided a deposit of 545,000, which is their fair share of replacement of one segment of that, um, about 500 feet of that pipeline in Highway 213, should that need to be upgraded in the future. And I think this appeal is about not necessarily how we calculated that or how much that amount is, the, uh, the applicant is willing to pay that. The, uh, their concern is, what if we don't spend that money? Should they get it back at some time in the future? And our feeling is, is that that's, um, that's not something we want to commit to. That's, we feel strongly about the fact that we're either going to have to replace that or we're going to have to spend a, a lot of money in the basins to, to reduce INI. The, the reason we looked hard at how we calculated that, uh, 545,000, we, we tried to find an objective way to do that and, and looking at what we knew. We knew we had all those pipe segments up there that could require replacement in the future, and if they do, what's their fair apportionment of that? Trying to do that, uh, come up with that same objective system for the, uh, surrounding basins is, is more problematic for us. We don't have a good way of doing that because we don't really know those facts. We don't have enough information. So, we're reluctant to, uh, refund that, that money for the applicant. So, that's one piece. The other is, there's a small connection, Tony, do we have a drawing on the, um... Yeah, so, um, right near the high school, also near the development, you'll see the red line there. We're proposing that they connect to a, a, a pipeline in Myers Road. They would like to utilize a small pedestrian pathway. It's also a utility easement, but small easement that's, um, used as a front yard and access for pedestrians and for, um, the property owners. That's, it's just, uh, a few, few hundred feet away from that, that they could extend that. It would be a shorter extension for them. Our concern is, we've got two 16-inch water lines in Beaver Creek Road and an 8-inch water line, natural gas line, all at a very similar depth to what they would need to be extending, uh, or we, we believe to be at the similar depth. We haven't actually done the potholing there. So, our preference is to see them tie into a deeper section, cross under those facilities. We're not interested in seeing our water, well, one of them's not ours, one of them's CRWs, but we're not interested in seeing those transmission mains, um, diverted or changed in a way that would provide more head losses in the system. So, uh, that's, that's our main reason for requiring them to go into Myers Road, and they're appealing that piece. You gave me a two-minute warning, are you telling me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so...
Staff has a time limit, too.
I didn't realize that. Okay, so, um, I guess, uh, I guess I'll stop with that, and we'll, uh, see if more questions come up. But those are the, that's the gist of those two issues that they have, um, that this applicant or appellant has raised.
And I think, um, one other, just real quick, concerning the water was brought up concerning coordination between the City of Oregon City and Clackamas River Water. Uh, we have several intergovernmental agreements, um, as land transitions from rural to urban in terms of those services being provided and transferring over to the city. It's not unusual nor unique. It is a coordinated effort between two agencies to, uh, provide water services in an efficient manner as land urbanizes.
So, I guess, uh, one other thing I would add to that is the proposal that we had, uh, from the applicant and that we've required of the applicant is to build a water line, whether it be CRWs or the cities, whether it be used in a different manner or not, that water line will never have to be replaced. It will always be used in, uh, whether it be a city, you know, pipeline or a CRW pipeline.
So with that, um, staff is recommending that the commission deny, uh, both appeals and uphold the Community Development Director's approval with conditions of planning file SP 1401. With that, we'll conclude our, conclude our presentation and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, okay. I think we'll hold questions until after the public hearing. So, at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Does the attorney have anything to say?
We thought about a certain order.
Um, I would suggest that we hear from the appellant, uh, Grazer Lindsay first, uh, and then we'll hear from the applicant, appellant, slash appellant, and then, uh, we'll take public testimony in general, and then we'll allow both of those parties to rebut.
Okay, so are we in that same order, Katie, on my screen?
I think you are.
I think we are.
Okay, so, uh, we'll hear from Elizabeth Grazer Lindsay. So, just to refresh your memory, you have 10 minutes.
Can you wait till I get sat down?
No, yeah, you're fine. Time hasn't started yet, it doesn't let you know.
Okay, are you going to tell me when it starts?
Go.
Thanks. Um, the application cannot be considered or approved because the concept plan must precede urbanization and development. On this map, we can see the red area, which is where the application is, and we can see that it's in the, um, annexation, um, that happened, which was, um, which is blue. And that occurred in, um, 2007. And it was appealed to the Land Use, um, Board of Appeals, which was actually in Aaron, Tony's testimony. Um, this land is also in the central part of the Beaver Creek Road concept plan area, which was adopted in 2008, and, um, Luba remanded it, which means it rejected the concept plan and sent it back to the city to revise it. Um, like me, the City's own planning commission felt that annexing this blue area before the concept plan was done was putting the cart before the horse. So consequently, I appealed the annexation... So consequently, I appealed the annexation to Luba. And Luba affirmed that the annexation could go ahead before the concept plan, but found that this decision was a question that was a reasonably close one, and so it required very specific interpretations of Oregon City's law to allow that to happen. So right here, we see one part of Oregon City law that Luba looked at real carefully. This is Oregon City Comprehensive Plan Goal 14.4. And this is how Luba interpreted that part of your comprehensive plan. I'm going to read the parts that are bold. A concept plan will precede actual urbanization of annexed lands. The city took steps to ensure that urbanization cannot occur until the Beaver Creek Road concept plan has been completed. And then Luba also looked really closely at Oregon City's municipal code, the numbers shown there, and when it interpreted that particular provision, it said, "No urban development will be possible before the Beaver Creek Road concept plan is adopted, and the Beaver Creek Road concept plan will be required to address the public facilities and services," and that these facts will make this law be complied with. And then Luba reiterated this point several more times in their final opinion and order. In both of these paragraphs that I'm not reading, it again says that the concept plan has to precede urbanization and development. Then the city also has other laws that aren't related to annexation that also require that the concept plan precedes development, and here's a couple examples. The staff is saying that a rezone that occurred in 2010 with some conditions is sufficient to allow the urbanization and development to precede the concept plan. This isn't correct. When the city argued the annexation before Luba, they just gave one argument for the entire area that was to be annexed. They didn't cut the land into several parts and say, "Well, these parts were before the urban growth boundary was expanded, and these parts are after, and we need higher standards here and lower standards here." They didn't say that at all. They had one argument for the whole annexation area, and so the Luba decision applies uniformly to the whole annexation area. The rezone with conditions is not equivalent to a concept plan, and it can't substitute for one. And the staff acknowledges that without a concept plan, they can't require this to comply with the concept plan. Without having the concept plan in effect, then this area can't be coordinated with the whole concept plan area. The staff was mentioning that they're using the old concept plan, but the old concept plan had some problems, and the title for industrial problem was only one of the problems. So doing this would get in the way of actually the concept plan being applied across the The city itself would be in air to consider this application when the time is not right because the concept plan is not adopted. The city would be, or has been wrong, to guide the applicant towards applying when the application cannot yet be received because the concept planning isn't finished. The concept plan is needed because it identifies the full build-out requirements on public services, and it guides updating the master plans. So without knowing how that process might run out, you can't tell for sure what will happen. The city's needs could possibly have changed, and there also was appeal of the previous plan that was successful, and Luba agreed that there were some problems. They expected those to get fixed as the process went ahead again. So here's another problem that exists. The public services and facilities are not planned and designed properly and are not adequate. They aren't without adverse impacts on the existing residents of the city, they're not coordinated with the rest of the area where they're located, the concept plan area, and the plans are without plans for funding. And, oopsie. I wanted to give more specific examples, starting with transportation. Beaver Creek Road is quite crowded, but the plan that was developed here doesn't include having the possibility of a new lane to handle new traffic volumes. In fact, the development is planned to be just right on the edge of Beaver Creek Road, which would make it either impossible or very expensive to widen Beaver Creek Road in the future. In past traffic analyses, your consultant predicted that tens of thousands of vehicle trips a day would be generated by this whole area. The ODOT reviewer thought that the trip load was underestimated. They, because the applicants were thinking that the people would work on site because of industrial land there. But with the residential land being prioritized over the family wage job creation and it preceding it in time, it means there won't be any family wage jobs on site for these new residents to have available. This increasing congestion of the road is very devastating for the Beaver Creek community, for Oregon City neighborhoods, and other areas also. The state and county predict in the next 20 years that Highway 213 through Noel Creek Canyon and I-5 past Oregon City will have extreme levels of congestion. There's also a sewer issue, and that is that the oversizing of facilities is provided for by the city code. So this area is supposed to connect onto the Beaver Creek Road sewer, but instead, they want to go to Glen Oaks, as you heard. The problem with that is that they realize that they would need to weld shut the manhole covers because the sewage would be two feet down. The city said, the city engineers said that welding those shut, or bolting them shut, wouldn't solve the capacity problems, and that it would cause problems such as backing up of sewage into people's basements. So the city decided that it could charge 25% of the cost of fixing the, enlarging the sewage system on 213, with the other 75% being paid when the other development occurred in the concept plan area. But this leads to some problems, and that is that there's a timing problem here, where if the other development doesn't occur for 10 years, as the city is predicting in the documents you have, then we'll have sewage backing up and coming up against these manhole covers before the dollars start coming in in order to expand the pipes.
Next up is Andrew Brandt.
Thank you.
Andrew Brandt and Steve Holtberg are the applicant appellants.
Oh, okay.
So I think they may testify together.
It wasn't clear on my technological screen in front of me.
Well, Andrew's name is spelled wrong, too.
Yeah, probably because my handwriting is terrible. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Steve Holtberg, I'm the attorney for the appellant and slash applicant. I'm at PO Box 2007, Bend, Oregon 97709. With me is Andrew Brandt, he is the applicant and owner of Beaver Creek LLC. We're going to split our time a little bit. Andrew's going to talk a bit about the project, and then I'll talk about some of the legal issues associated with the two conditions of approval that you heard staff talk about earlier. We are likely not to get to the rebuttal of the other appellant's arguments until later in the presentation.
Can I hold you up one second? How come my timer's not working?
It's coming.
It was a quick seven minutes.
Yeah, it's going fast.
And one question, I mean--
All right, thank you.
Do we get 20 minutes as an appellant and an applicant, or just 10?
Nice try, though.
Got to try.
Thank you.
Are we good to go?
Go ahead.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to talk a bit about the project, and then I'll go back to me and talk about some of the conditions.
Thanks. My name is Andrew Brandt, I'm with Evergreen Housing Development Group, we're the applicant, also an appellant here. Just a little bit of background, thank you for your time tonight. Evergreen Housing Development acquired this site for the project before you tonight in late 2012. We saw promise and opportunity in Oregon City and in this neighborhood. In early review with the Planning and Public Works Departments, we knew that we had to design a project that met with the intent of the unadopted Beaver Creek Road concept plan. We also relied on prior planning documents and decisions for the site, which did show the cross-basin sewer connection to Glen Oaks as the sewer connection for this site. We put many hours of thought and research into the village concept before you today. We studied ideal block standards for future growth and connectivity, we looked at how the buildings would interact with the pedestrian environment, we thought of the building massing in relation to adjacent uses, and we studied live-work concepts as incubators for small business entrepreneurship that are also pleasant streetfront amenities which do not create the high-trip generation of strip mall retail. In negotiations with public works staff on the cross-basin decisions in prior land use documents for this site, it became clear that additional study of cross-basin sewer impacts would be beneficial to demonstrate two things. First, that our proposal would not overwhelm the Glen Oak system. Second, if it did have impacts, that we would pay for our proportionate share of those impacts through quantifiable fees. The director's decision in the MDNS to pay a proportionate share of our impacts on a cross-basin connection are not being challenged by us. Some of the memos before you today state that this is the basis for our challenge, but that is not the fact. We only have two exceptions to the director's MDNS decision. First, we ask that the cross-basin impact fee be assessed in a manner allowing a future refund to us if the Beaver Creek Basin sewer network is improved and connected to our site before the city has the need to utilize the funds for the identified projects in the Glen Oak Basin that would be necessary due to our project. Second, we ask that if a sewer connection to the end of Emerson Court meets city engineering standards and does not cost the city additional funds, that it be allowed for consideration by the director as our sewer connection point. Our feeling is that the currently mandated connection in Myers will be much more disruptive to the community during construction, yet serves no additional service to the city. So we look forward to creating this cornerstone of a future community in the Beaver Creek area. Thank you for your time, and I'll pass it back to Steve.
Yeah, for the record, Steve Holtberg. I want to focus on just really two of the conditions that staff talked about earlier. And I do want to be clear that we fully support the director's decision on this, we fully support the conditions that were imposed. We have no complaint about the fee in lieu, the amount of the fee in lieu, when it should be paid, no complaints about that, no objection to that. So I want to focus on the fee in lieu first. The concern that we have is that this payment will be made at some point in the relatively near future. And what we don't know is whether and when improvements in the Glen Oaks Basin will be made, or if they'll ever be made. So our concern is, at some point in the future, that the Beaver Creek Basin improvements are put in place, whether by the city, by another developer, or other improvements are decided to go in there by the city, that the applicant has paid that money for improvements that were never made, and then is being charged again, perhaps for a local improvement district fee for connections to the Beaver Creek Basin, and on top of that, is paid SDCs towards the future improvements to Beaver Creek. So in that respect, the applicant could be triple-charged for improvements, both to Beaver Creek and to Glen Oaks Basin. So that's our real concern, is that what happens in the future if these improvements are not made? We don't want to be charged essentially twice for those improvements. We are not asking that the commission make a decision tonight about how to refund those or whether they should be refunded. All we are asking for is an opportunity to continue this discussion with staff, and as necessary with the commission, to perhaps reach a development agreement about how to deal with these costs in the future. If there's no refund provided, and the improvements are made, again, we have no objection to that whatsoever. We just want to make sure that the applicant's not paying twice or two and a half times for certain improvements. And so all we're asking for is some flexibility from the commission to say, "Continue these discussions with staff, and if we can reach agreement, great." Ultimately, this decision is entirely in your hands because you have to approve a development agreement. If you decide it's not worth it, you decide it's not feasible, you can make that decision later, and we have, that's your decision to make. We're just asking that you don't close that door tonight and provide the opportunity for us to continue those discussions. It's really the same type of issue with Condition 34, and that condition is the one that requires a connection of the sanitary line in Myers Road rather than the preferred point from the applicant at Emerson Court. And the difference is quite material, and it's about 450 feet of additional sewer line that the applicant will have to install. They'll have to tear up Myers Road, which was put in relatively recent, and then the cost associated with that is quite significant. And so again, what we're asking for is not that the council make a decision tonight about whether it should go at Emerson Court, or whether it should go in Myers Road, we're simply asking for the opportunity to continue this discussion with staff. And again, this decision is ultimately entirely in staff's hands. If the Public Works Department says that it's not feasible because of the depth of the manhole, if it decides that it's not feasible because of water lines in the way, that is staff's decision, and we will live with it. Again, we're just asking for an opportunity to continue those discussions with staff because I think we have maybe a difference of opinion about whether the improvements to Emerson Court are feasible, and we just want to continue to explore those with staff. And again, it's their decision to make, it's the city's decision to make, we just want the opportunity to continue that discussion. Really, with both of these, I think the important point is, either way, on both conditions, the city will be satisfied because improvements are going to be made. There's no risk that we're going to have substandard sewer with these conditions, no risk whatsoever. And ultimately, whether it's a month from now or three months from now, the city can say, "There's not enough information, we're not going to go forward." And we just want you to keep that door open for us today. We have proposed some conditions of approval, the city attorney has copies of those, and I actually have hard copies that I'll hand to each of you this evening. But they're pretty basic conditions, and they do provide the city with the ultimate say in how this will go forward. And with that, I think, I don't have a whole lot more to add to our case. In terms of responding to the other appellant, we will do that in our rebuttal session.
Thank you, sir.
Andrew, I did not, or, sorry, Steve, I did not distribute the letter--
Understood.
--that you've sent to me.
That's why I'm going to hand it out right now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There we go. So, next on the list, Christine Kozinski. So Christine, are you speaking for a recognized neighborhood association, or are you on your own tonight?
I have a request from the Hamlet first, and then I'm speaking for myself. I believe that the city's practice is for the Hamlet to be treated as an incorporated public interest organization, although they're not a recognized neighborhood association within the city. So we would give five minutes for the neighborhood, the Hamlet, to speak, and then Ms. Kozinski would have three minutes to speak as an individual.
Okay.
I have a request before I begin. The Hamlet board has not met since November due to the holidays, we're meeting tomorrow night, and I would ask that the hearing be left open so that this can go before the board, and we can get a letter to you possibly within a week.
Well, I'm confused then, because you're, so you're speaking for-- Well, I'm confused then, because you're, so you're speaking for the hamlet-
As the speaker of the hamlet.
-without any recognition of the body as a whole?
I am the speaker of the hamlet, and-
I guess what I'm saying is, if you're going tomorrow night to get a decision about what we're talking about, I'm not sure how you're speaking to that without the rest of your board.
The hamlet allows me to speak in their behalf.
Okay. I will reluctantly accept that. I would prefer that organizations coming before us have made a decision and had formed a policy before an individual comes and speaks. I'm a little hesitant. What happens if what you say tonight your board disagrees with?
They're going to write a letter.
How long is the record going to be open on this?
It's going to be up to the commission to decide, but we need to make a decision on February 4th. So, we're going to leave the record open until, I would recommend until February 4th, and we're going to reconvene, we're going to close the record, and you're going to make a decision.
Okay, so I'm going to look for some guidance from the rest of the commission. It's my sense that we should wait for the hamlet to make a decision, and then they can submit their testimony in the public record. And Ms. Kozinski can speak on her individual time. I'm uncomfortable with having that happen without a decision from whoever the body is that is supposedly being represented.
I think that makes sense. She can speak on her own behalf.
We have a consensus?
Yes. So, is there any, we're running up against the clock too much to leave this to February 4th?
That is the decision date.
That is the drop-dead decision date. So, as long as everyone here is comfortable with that.
So, we will, the commission will allow you to speak as an individual, and we'll look forward to hearing, seeing the written testimony from the hamlet.
Christine Kozinski, Unincorporated, Clovis County. Without a doubt, the lack of necessary infrastructure for development here is of huge concern. This property was part of a 122-acre annexation measure in November of 2007. This should have never gone to ballot, since the factors for annexation could not be met for infrastructure. Again, in 2010, the city changed zoning from FU10 to MUC1. The glaring lack of infrastructure could not have been more apparent, and yet the city erroneously approved the zone change, knowing that the needed infrastructure would not be in place. On August 18th, 2014, a letter was sent from Beaver Creek Road LLC to Clovis River Water stating that the city of Oregon City may have difficulty providing adequate water service to the proposed development for both residential water and for fire services. Beaver Creek Road LLC went on to formally request ex-territorial water service from CRW. For sewer capacity, I cite the Keller Associates technical memo of September 9th, 2014. When they speak of the Glen Oaks Road sewer discharges into Highway 213, sewer nodes, they recommend that the manholes with only two feet of cover be equipped with bolted-down, sealed manholes, if these are currently not in place. The transportation plan is poor and severely underfunded. Out of 360 projects costing $221 million, only $73 million can be expected to be funded. Take the development, take this development at a new bus barn on Myers, an industrial enterprise zone possibly, at the proposed development at the old bus barn on Maple Lane. Altogether, these call for master planning for this entire area of Oregon City. To do anything less would be irresponsible. Now, consider all of this development being served by only one road, where TriMet, school buses, and parking on Beaver Creek will be allowed. Now toss in traffic from a possible enterprise zone and from development at the old bus barn, and what do you have? A recipe for disaster. The hamlet of Beaver Creek has submitted 24 pages of testimony with concerns about this development, and in fact, they are being held hostage by irresponsible development from the city. Development that will leave them stranded and open to long response times for emergency help. This is why master planning is extremely vital. The city met with the Caulfield neighborhood. I don't think that's even 6,700 people. There are 6,700 people in Beaver Creek that were totally left out. The Luba decision makes it crystal clear. They agreed the annexation could proceed the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, with the understanding that the concept plan would proceed urbanization. So, why is the city proposing spot development on these 9.7 acres without the concept plan and master planning going first?
Thank you. Next up is Mary Johnson.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you guys decide that you would keep the testimony open until the 4th of February?
The record's going to be open somewhere in there. We'll make a final decision on when the record's going to be open after we close the public hearing.
Because I'm not representing the Caulfield Neighborhood Association, but I am supposed to report back to them on Tuesday.
Sure, yeah, I'm sure it'll be open till the end.
The record will be open until at least February 4th. Okay, all right. And is there a way to get that map back up there again?
Which map?
The sewer map, the big one. Oh, you need this?
Yeah, I think we got, that one?
The big one that shows this more.
Ma'am, you need to speak at the microphone, so we can make sure you're recorded.
I'm starting, yes.
Okay.
Is this the map you were talking about?
Okay, yeah, let's see if I can get this thing. Oh, what did I do?
You're fine.
We're just making it bigger. Point. You don't. This doesn't point? No, but I can help you. What would you like? Well, I just wanted to point out some places here. Well, okay, my name is Mary Johnson. I live on Beaver Creek Road. I'm directly affected by this. I'm almost across the street from the Purple Triangle there, and I'm very concerned about the sewer line. I've only been in Oregon City since 2007. One of the things I did first when I moved up here is I went to some of the meetings on the Beaver Creek Road plan, and I asked, "What is your plan for sewer development out there?" Because I wanted to show all the houses down there. South of the Purple Triangle, there's at least 20 some houses in there that are on septic tanks. They do not have sewer line, and I was told at the time by the planning department, well, actually by the road district meetings, they didn't even talk about sewer line. They had no plan on that. I asked one of the ladies at the charrette at the community college. I said, "You guys going to put a sewer line down?" And she goes, "Huh?" I said, "'Cause there's like 20 houses out there that don't have sewer lines," and she didn't even know about it. So, I don't always trust planners, I'm sorry. But Marjory Lane is where the sewer line ends, and that's up by the Chevron Station.
Right.
That means that the developers are going to have to run nearly a mile of sewer line down Beaver Creek Road, or somebody's going to have to do it. And if they don't want to pay the share of dumping into Myers Road, which would be a disaster, because that's the high school, are you kidding me? Have you ever been there at 3 o'clock?
Yes, I have.
This is nuts. They're going to, they want to tear up, they want to go through the little subdivision on Emerson Court, and I don't think they have permission. I don't think that's public space. I don't know. I haven't had time to really study this. But it's really already congested. It's just crazy. And then you take the brand-new road and tear it up and put a sewer line down through there with all the paving, replacement paving. I don't know how this could possibly work. I'm not financing this, thank God. Anyway, Marjory Lane is where the sewer line ends, and so there's nothing, there's nothing out there, except a little line going, an eight-inch line going out to Glen Oaks Road. So, Myers Road is a little bit bigger, so they can dump it into there, but it's got to go downhill, and then it's eventually going to tie into Glen Oaks Road, and this is, there's a lot of sensitive areas down there. There's the, I mean, the other development that went in, they had to put in catch basins and water retention ponds and all this kind of stuff. And so, if that sewer ever overflows in there, I would have to move. I don't want to live there with sewer lines being welded down just to keep the stuff in there. So, I think you need to really look at the comment that the lady over there made, when she had concept problem number two. There's no infrastructure out there for this kind of development. I was told it would be 10 years before they'd even start thinking about putting a sewer line out there. But I really don't support this idea, and I, you know, he's saying that they don't have, they want to reduce the amount of money that they're spending on the $400,000, $545,000, but I think that's-
Thank you, ma'am.
-the best thing you could hope for.
Mr. Gifford.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and I am speaking for the Oregon City Business Alliance. I think it's a little unfortunate that both of these appeals have to be dealt with at the same time, because they are predicated on such different premises. The one, well, to paraphrase a quote, "Clear ideas are able to be expressed clearly." The applicant's concerns seem to be pretty black and white. They want more time to negotiate funding for improving the infrastructure. The other, the other appellant's arguments seem to be obscure. I live in Oregon City, and I think some other folks don't, that are opposing this. I live in Oregon City, and I want to see this developed, and the Business Alliance is supportive of this development with the conditions that are placed on it as they exist now. So, we are supporting the staff's recommendation to deny these appeals. I know that the record is going to stay open for a little while, and that's fine, get some more comments in, but I think the general idea is, we want development, and if there is adequate infrastructure for it, I would rather work for finding a way of making it happen than work for finding ways of stopping it from happening. Those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. So, we're going to go to rebuttals?
Is that all the public testimony?
That's all I have.
Anybody else wishing to testify? Okay, I think we'll hear some rebuttal testimony with the caveat that the record will be, will remain open, so folks don't have to rebut if they don't wish to.
Okay.
But we would allow Ms. Grazer Lindsay to go first, if you would like to go that.
And we're going five minutes on rebuttals?
Sure.
To continue to address the issues at hand, on the issue of water, the city needs more water and more water pressure to serve this area. According to experts, a reservoir is needed to the south to give the water and water pressure needed. With this not present, the city is allowing that the rural water district be talked to to see if it can provide the water. But this can come up short under a number of scenarios. One is the build-out in the Beaver Creek area. Another is the conditions of drought. Another is that as more local food production is sought, you know, we're hearing that in the Central Valley of California, the produce that we buy in the grocery store is, can be affected by drought. So, if we were to have more local food production, we'd need increased irrigation. So, for these reasons and others, this rural water district has a priority to serve the rural areas, and it can leave this development without water, which if you look at the response that the water district gave to the city, you can see that it hasn't made any kind of contract, and it is not going to be serving the entire concept plan area, and it can't assure you of anything. The whole paper is practically blank. So, this solution of using water from the rural water district, it lacks a contract or firm commitment. And it also, by going this route, it would leave the concept plan area without a solution, because really, you want to have each development within the concept plan area making a financial contribution to getting the whole solution in place. And when you have the very first one using a kind of side approach, then the whole area is not prepared to have the proper water infrastructure. And this can leave the city without being able to provide urban services, or possibly having to deprive people in the rest of the city from water if there was an emergency. The police and fire evidence wasn't provided or even sought until after the planning approval was given. If you look at the dates on that, you see those were just received quite recently. And there was a third error. This development would hamper, block, and preempt the needed concept planning. Since this is right in the central part of the concept plan area, having it being pre-designed hampers the rest of the concept plan being completed, and so this can prevent the meeting of Oregon City's needs and compliance with the law. This part of the concept plan area happens to be flat and unbisected, unlike the northern and eastern parts of the general area, which are unbuildable due to severe slopes from ravines and canyons and multiple regional power line corridors. So, if you want to do good planning, you need to have the best site part of the planning area. And then a fourth error is that Oregon City didn't get notice to the Caulfield Neighborhood Association. I learned that by talking to the chair.
Thank you.
Good evening again. For the record, Steve Holberg. I think at this point, we were, we are going to waive our rebuttal and respond in writing, although we are happy to address any questions that the commission may have regarding specifically our request or any concerns you may have about anything else you heard tonight that you'd like to hear from us.
Does anybody have anything?
No, I'd rather, I don't have anything, no.
No questions? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, at this point, we're going to close the public hearing.
Can I ask you a question on the record?
Sure.
We have a 120-day limit of February 4th, which will require us to make a decision on that date. Are you, is that okay? I mean, we're going to have to adopt findings that date, too. You guys want to extend it all to accommodate some additional time, or how do you want to proceed?
We haven't really discussed it, but I guess my recommendation would be to leave the record open until the 4th. We would extend for just for findings adaption for, until the next council meeting. I'm not sure, commission meeting, I'm not sure when that is, though.
What is the date?
18th of February.
18th of February. That would work well for staff, if that works for the commission. So, what that means is, you will make a tentative decision on February 4th. We will take testimony on February 4th. You will make a tentative decision after we close the public hearing on the 4th. You will make a tentative decision and instruct us to write findings consistent with that decision. We will return on the 14th, and you will adopt those findings, 18th, excuse me. You will adopt those findings if they are consistent with your deliberation.
For both appeals?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I had understood that only the record is going to be left open. I didn't realize the hearing was going to be continued until the 4th.
We have to continue it because there's not enough time to do a 777 situation with the hearing on the 4th, and I think those are my only two choices.
Fair enough.
Okay, so, we're in close-
If you have no other questions, I think that closes the public portion of the hearing tonight, but again, the record will remain open. So, anyone could submit written testimony, and they can come on the 4th and testify.
Okay, so now we're in the discussion phase?
If you would like to discuss.
Between the commission and staff?
You are certainly welcome to do that.
Because I know I have a few questions, but-
I'm sure the public would appreciate hearing them while the record's open.
Does the, does anybody, any of the commissioners have questions? If so, can you key on the screen so I can see you? Where'd you go? Mr. Shaw. Oh, there you go. Mr. Shaw, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So, Tony, has there been a traffic impact study done on Beaver Creek Road for this development?
Yes, there was.
Okay. What was the results of that? Maybe I didn't see them on here and stuff, but...
Essentially, we've attached conditions of approval to the staff report for the SP that deal with widening, design of the light at the intersection, the bike lanes, the streetscape. There was also an additional, I'm sorry, we weren't, a fee in lieu of that was, that is response, the applicant's responsible for the proportional share, 14% of cost to construct the right turn lane from Myers Road to Northbound 213. The fee in lieu amount is $50,400. So when Myers Road eventually gets fully constructed, this development was responsible for providing a right turn lane where that new Myers Road to 213 for that northbound movement. So we attached the conditions that were necessary, but otherwise, it did show compliance with our transportation, through that transportation analysis.
So my concern was, from the project to the college, we're still only going to have a two-lane road.
But that changes with implementation of more development. It won't be re-prepared.
Well, but that's up until then, but we don't know when that happens.
Right.
Okay.
It is traditionally the way that transportation and right-of-way improvements happen in Oregon City unless there's a large infrastructure project. It's driven by development.
Okay.
So to follow up on that, because I have as much concern about anybody else's traffic, it's probably my number-one thing, is there right-of-way all along Beaver Creek Road either being taken as part of the development process, or however, so that we have enough to go to two lanes in each direction somewhere in the future?
The concept behind the Beaver Creek Road concept plan was to limit access on the Beaver Creek Road. So one way to address transportation impact and transportation demand on a facility is through limiting, is providing access control. And so by limiting the accessways on Beaver Creek Road, it's keeping it more of a designed way it is, focusing around either the roundabout or a light. And so the methodology shown in the Beaver Creek concept plan was to keep it as a two-lane section. That was the desire of the community, essentially a three-lane section, I'm sorry, northbound, southbound, with a turn lane. There was no desire, the really, the direction we were going to, was to avoid a five-lane section at all costs. So the way to do that was through access management and limiting those accessways on the Beaver Creek Road. So you don't end up with driveway after driveway or side road after side road, which increases left and right turning movements both off of Beaver Creek, onto the side street, and off the side street out on the Beaver Creek Road, essentially protecting your capacity of that system. So no, we are not collecting sufficient right-of-way for a five-lane section of Beaver Creek Road.
Okay, well, that's an argument I'll have to have at a different time.
We're working off the plans that were adopted.
Actually, I had one more question, too, Mayor Holliday. The application is not complete, is that correct? That was one of the...
Issues raised?
Issues, yeah.
Correct.
Is that correct? What's missing on the application?
No, he's not saying the application is incomplete. He's saying that you were correct in that that was in...
The appellant, Ms. Grazer-Lindsay, contended that the application was not complete because staff's responses to infrastructure were not included.
Okay.
Our responses to compliance with approval criteria is not a completeness issue. The only thing we look at completeness is, are the required, is the required plan provided?
Yeah.
It could be a plan that's completely wrong, but it's been provided.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Holliday.
Commissioner Polly.
So there will be a need for more capacity on the roads with development. So is the thinking that if Beaver Creek is not, is only going to be the two, well, three lanes, that that capacity will come from the Myers connection to 213, and then there's Henrissi that cuts over, and there's other connections?
Correct. You have Livsey potentially connecting down. You have Loder, I'm sorry, Loder, not Livsey.
Loder Road.
Loder Road, Myers Road, Glen Oak Road. And then as part of the concept plan, essentially what that provided was a frontage road that parallels Beaver Creek Road for the entirety, so that internal trips don't have to get on to Beaver Creek Road.
Oh, okay.
Another method to protect the capacity of Beaver Creek Road.
So it will all be concentrated on the one road. Those other roads will be improved so that they can increase capacity.
Creating a strong network of alternative routes is how you protect your capacity of your major streets.
Okay, and then the second thing I wanted to talk about was the sewer and septic. I know there is septic out there. So what's in the plan to get them on sewer and to handle that capacity issue and also the water basin?
So I'm not sure who's controlling at this point, but there's a sanitary sewer master plan map that we had up there before, I think it was before this one?
That's the one, yeah.
That one. So again, the lines in blue represent the future extension lines, and this is right out of the master plan. We haven't adopted SDCs that support this plan, but the intent is that we would get there at some point in the future whereby, is there, there's a pointer on here that I could show, or who's running? Are you?
I can, if you'd like, or...
So unfortunately, I think maybe if you could turn around to just... So these are some of the septic systems that were mentioned earlier, and there is a plan to, again, continue the, this, this, where's my pointer? There we go. So this is where the sewer ends currently, and there's over a mile to get to this property here where the development is, is yet to be built. And then as we move to the, further to the south, there would be plans for further extension of that to serve some of these septic properties that are on septic tank now, as well as some of these outlying areas that are in the concept plan. So that's how those areas would be served. Some up where? Oh, right, there's a small pocket right in here that needs service as well. So did that answer the question?
That makes me dizzy looking up there.
Okay, well, I have a couple of questions, because I just want to make sure that, can somebody answer the whole manhole covers thing for me?
Right, so there are instances where, and if you remember, this is during peak flows, this is a 10-year storm event that we moved to with the master plan. So in those, in that peak 10-year storm, sewers often fill up and surcharge. In this case, some solutions are to bolt down manhole lids, others are to upgrade the pipe sizes. And a lot of this problem is associated with some of the, again, I'm going to point up here, but the capacity problems along Highway 213. What we're seeing is surcharge that's backing up into the system and coming out the lowest point, essentially. So the model shows some manholes that are already very shallow, that either need to be upsized downstream, or we need to reduce flows up in the basin, or we need to bolt down those manhole lids to turn that more into pressurized system. And in fact, we're looking at some of those kind of solutions in our moratoriums projects as well. You know, we just, you know, if we don't have to replace pipe, and there's a solution that might turn that into something that isn't going to flood basements, that's one way of doing it. And a lot of, in fact, a lot of the Tri-City Interceptor bolt down manhole lids. And so typically, they don't weld them down, they bolt them down, and they seal those so that they can, and those peak hour times, which doesn't happen very often, they fill up and they basically hold that like a pressure system. So in this case, you know, this is a ways out. It's at full build-out of the basin that was projected, and which, you know, might include, you know, some of these septic system areas along Caulfield Road and all those coming online at the same time.
But at the same time, we're also going to have maybe some of the improvements done on 213.
That's part of the problem that we're dealing with here, is we're having to answer a question real early in the process.
Sure.
And so we're trying to both accommodate a development request that has some feasibility to it, especially if we can hold to the conditions that we have, which is to pay for some of those upgrades early. And in the meantime, let's, we need to do our due diligence. That's why we've pursued the race that we have, do our due diligence with production of INI in these drainage bases.
So one of the other questions, and I know you probably, in fact, I know you didn't answer it, but I want to hear it. It's not, I sit on South Fork Water Board, so I know something, a little something about water providing, and it's not possible that this development could somehow be left high and dry without water. It's not legally possible for that to happen, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and there's plenty, if it's a supply question, we've got lots of supply through our South Fork provider. You know, this question about, you know, CRW or Oregon City, you know, at this point, we're trying to, we're trying to, we need pressure there. We've got flow there. We just, our reservoir, our master plan calls for a higher reservoir that provides more pressure to that area and other areas in that neighborhood. So haven't built it yet. When we do build it, then we'll be, you know, back with negotiating with CRW to take over those systems.
Right, but we have an intergovernmental agreement between South Fork and CRW to provide water.
That's right.
So there is no possibility that that development could be left without water somehow?
We need to, we need to sign an IGA with CRW to make this particular deal happen. But we have other...
Oregon City and CRW.
That's right. Oregon City and CRW need to agree to an agreement, but we do that regularly. We have other IGAs as well.
Right.
So, and they have, they're open in understanding of that as well.
And all those are conditions. Those would be conditions that have to be met.
Right. Right. Yeah, that's a condition of the development here, that we work out the, it's not up to them to work out the agreements, it's up to us to do that.
Exhibit seven in your report tonight is a draft letter from Clackamas River Water. And one of the responses, "Utilizing a hydraulic model, CRW analyzed current and forecasted future demands, including proposed application SP 1401, to determine the CRW's system capacity. The results indicated that demands can be supplied without exposing the district customers to water shortages while maintaining the wholesale agreement with Oregon City. As an example, for the year 2040, the hydraulic modeling used on CRW's system, average daily demand equals 350 gallons per minute, and the development demand of 85 gallons per minute for a total demand of 435 gallons per minute. The system capacity equals 1,030 gallons per minute, which results in a 2.3 safety factor." So they're demonstrating that we have sufficient supply.
Okay, so the Beaver Creek concept plan, is this ever going to be done?
Right now, the issue relating to the consistency of the concept plan map to the Metro 2040 Design Type Map has been addressed. Our next step is to bring it back to the approval process for the city, beginning with the Planning Commission hearings, which we intend to start this spring.
Okay.
And then that would continue through assuming affirmative by the Planning Commission to the City Commission.
Okay, so last question on this particular thing, and that, assuming you decided to let them use, the applicant use Myers Road instead of the other place, or is Myers Road the preferred?
Myers Road is preferred for us, and there's a couple of reasons. One is...
Doesn't matter, that's not the question I'm asking. So my question is, what impact is that going to have on the high school while that's under construction? Or would you schedule that so it wouldn't affect the high school? Because it seems to me if you're tearing up Myers Road right there, that's going to have a significant impact on transportation at the high school, having dropped off and picked up kids there. If you close off one end of that place, that's going to be a nightmare.
Well, I would say we haven't gotten that far, but I agree with you.
Okay.
So we'll have to, you know, we'll have to work with the applicant to do that within the code that we have to require that.
So then this one's for the attorney, it's the last question. Assuming we deny both these appeals, what's the likelihood or the probability that this is going to go somewhere else, or is this it?
This decision can be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals 21 days, Notice to Tentative Appeals, we felt 21 days after the city adopts findings and those findings get mailed.
Okay.
So yes, this decision is reviewable.
Oh, there is one little more, one more here that I missed. So the applicant was talking about they paid this 550,000 or whatever it is in lieu of, then they're also paying SDCs, correct? Would they be subject to an LID as well? After they paid SDCs?
That's a commission. That could be come before the commission and something that the commission rule on, but that's not our, that's not where we think this will go. You know, for one, we're not sure we're collecting the right amount of SDCs yet to fund these improvements that they're talking about, so that one, to me, is still kind of off the table. We may choose to apply those 550, you know, thousand dollars on to something other than a pipe replacement to reduce the flows, to mitigate the damage. It may make sense to, you know, continue to have those conversations with the developer, but at this point, we're not planning on any, or we don't have any, we don't envision a triple fit, as was described.
Well, if I was in the applicant's shoes, I wouldn't be comfortable. I'm just saying. So, you know, that's something that we're going to have to talk about, but I would certainly not be, I mean, the whole point of, the reason that some of us are up here is that we need to get economic development going, and part of the thing about economic development is that we have to give some reassurance to folks who are laying their own capital and their own, you know, money online, that we're not going to hit them two or three times.
Mayor, if I might, you know, some cities in Oregon use LIDs prolifically. I used to work in one of those, in one of those cities. Other cities almost never use them. I don't remember us doing one in the last five years. I mean, Oregon City isn't a place that does them. So not that you want to, that may not be a huge comfort to the applicant, but it's not something that's done here hardly ever. The other thing to keep in mind is, the applicant has a fair say in whether or not those get created. There's a process by which they get created, and unless, unless Toyota wants to open a plant here, or some other gigantic compelling reason would come forward, and those usually also have some financing attached to them, I can't, I can't see how an LID is likely to occur in that area. It's an interesting conceptual argument, I just don't think it's likely.
Okay. So where do we go from here?
Anyone else have questions?
I don't think so. I was the last one.
Okay. I think you entertain a motion to continue the hearing to a date certain?
February 4th.
February 4th, leaving the record open. We'll reconvene on this then.
Somebody want to make the motion?
All right, you help me out with this. I move to have it at the February 4th.
To continue the hearing?
To continue the hearing.
To February 4th?
Leave the record open.
The record will be, remain open?
The record will remain open through February 4th.
Second?
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith to continue PC 15-147 appeals of planning file SP 1401 to a date certain of February 4th, and leaving the record open until then. Can you call it a roll, please?
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Please push your buttons.
Oh.
You've got to push your buttons, two kids, come on. Get with it. There we go.
It's unanimous.
Okay, so moving, oh, yes, moving on to, you know what, let's take five minutes. Can we do that?
Thank you.
Session. Next item on the agenda, 7A, 15069, request to move into the design development phase and public reprocess of the library project. Marine Cole Library Director.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Holliday. Tonight, we are here to follow up on...
Tonight, we are here to follow up on the work session last week when we presented about the status of the library and moving from schematic design phase into design development, and to continue on with the public review process. Since we met with you last week, we've had a library board meeting, we've had a community meeting, we've attended the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we've received a revised transportation impact study from our consultants, DKS. At the library board meeting, the board did approve a motion to recommend to the City Commission that you okay us to move forward. So, they're all on board and informed about what's going on, and they recommend moving forward, and would like you to recommend moving forward as well. Tonight, we have essentially the same presentation as last week that we thought we would run through really quickly for the public process, and our architect Sid Scott is here, who can do that real quickly and give you the opportunity to ask any more questions if you have any. We don't have to run through that if you think it's unnecessary. We don't want to waste your time, but we, we're prepared to do that if you'd like.
Does anybody feel like we need to see that presentation again?
I think I'm good with it.
I'm pretty much up to speed on it.
Yeah.
Very much.
Not to, not to denigrate that, but yeah.
No. Not at all.
You're okay with that?
And I apologize for you having to sit in the back for an hour and a half and wait to hear that you didn't have anything to do. So, do, is, is there some action that we actually need to take tonight, Mr. Frazier?
Yes. We, we want to make sure that we follow the process that we set out early in the schedule, so that would require the commission to authorize us to proceed.
So, I would entertain a motion?
There's a citizen comment.
Oh, I apologize. Mayor Neely?
How soon we forget?
It's one of the titles you carry through without your life, so just keep us doing it.
Well, I didn't let you use it before you got sworn in, remember?
Well, that's all right.
Anyway.
You were?
Anyway. This is probably one of the greatest public processes I've ever seen. It's gone, I think, through every conceivable board, neighborhood association that was directly there and so forth, and what has amazed me is that ultimately, all these groups eventually came into a rather common notion, design, as to what this ought to look like. And I was really impressed with the process, and I just wanted to thank our library director, our library board, for all the efforts they've done. The architects have done a great job, and every time, there's something different about it, but it, it becomes more pleasing every time I see it. And I've gone to several of those public meetings, and generally kept quiet during them. But it's been a great process, and I think everybody that's involved in that process should take great pride in it, and that's all I wanted to say.
Well, and you should be commended as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Neely.
Commissioner West?
Yes. So, a couple of questions. We aren't going through the PowerPoint tonight, but last time, looking through it, you know, it looked lovely, the clerestory windows and all kinds of brick, but there were no numbers and dollars attached to those pretty pictures. So, am I, by moving, approving this tonight, am I locking, or locking ourselves into something, a cost issue, or is that all going to be sifted out yet in the next stage? So, yes, I say I like these designs, but if I heard that it was 10 million more to do some of them, you know, whatever, so that's where I'm going.
That all gets sifted out, but I would love if Sid could answer that. Do you mind?
So-
So, as we go, our initial take on, there is, you know, the established budget for the, the library project, and so we're very sensitive to that, and our initial pass at it is, is that we're right on track. So, as we move forward into the detail, that'll become a lot clearer. And so, at each stage of the project, we're in, we're completing schematic design now. When we complete design development, we'll be back again. There will be more detail, and then there will be a cost update at that point. So, you're absolutely right. We don't want to head down a path, obviously, that is not obtainable with the budget, and we feel like we're, we're on track.
And at some point, the construction manager gets involved and comes up with a guaranteed maximum price, which is how the CMGC process that we're doing works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the contractor that's on board right now is the CMGC, the construction manager, general contractor. They are doing estimates as we go, and then when the drawings are about 90% complete for construction, they will start their final pricing process, and at the end of that, they will have a guaranteed maximum price. So, it'll be competitively bid.
So, at that, at that 90% stage is when they go out to that general contractor for value engineering?
That's correct. And look, you know, they'll be testing all the systems, getting competitive bids, you know, mechanical, electrical, all those things.
So, unlike our neighbor to the north, when we have a public works project, it's going to come in on time and on budget?
That is absolutely going to happen.
Okay.
Did I say that?
You're on the record now.
Yeah. Well, we know, and we do, you know, we know that there's a finite budget, and we need to meet that.
The advantage we have here, Mayor Holliday, is that we have actually had the general contractor on board the whole time through this building committee.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, fully aware of the CMGC process.
But that's a different process than normal. So, that's right. That's been the advantage.
Typically, where you're going to do everything, and then go out to bid, and then see where you are, so it's, it's, you know.
It's, it's actually a process that's used quite a bit in the private sector.
That's correct. And it's, yeah.
Is anything else, Commissioner West?
Yeah. Well, so, and then like last week, or whenever it was, we were chatting about, we noticed, so you can't change the light bulbs easy, this or that, you know, whatever, some issues with it. So, what can't be changed now after we move through this? So, what-
It's not going to ever be one story.
Huh?
It's not ever going to be one story. No matter how many times I say that, it's taken-
Probably underground.
So, let's be, so, we're not going to go from brick to cement, what, design elements are not going to change after tonight?
Well, I would look at schematics as you're approving a, kind of a defined concept for the library, but as far as the detail of materials and those sorts of things, that will be, that's part of the next process of design development, where we'll get into, and at the end of that, then materials will be fully selected for how to build the building, what the finishes are, and that sort of thing.
So, the explanation, Daphne, is this phase is, they're going to do the final design phase, and then go through a public process to have everybody, so the library board's going to say, okay, the brick is the brick that we want, and the tan is the tan we want, and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes. So, this last phase was for the, kind of summarized, was for the footprint, basically.
Sure. Yeah.
Footprint, but overall massing of the building, you know, how, how does a two-story building look with the Carnegie? And I think also developed a lot of ideas about how we really want to make sure that we're honoring the Carnegie and, and how to feature that. The idea of a, the, the new entry, the idea of creating a plaza, a lot of things came through the, and, and really great things came through the public process on this. And so, those things are what I would say are locked in, and-
The three entrances and where the playground is versus the pla, okay, great.
Yeah.
Great.
That make sense?
Yeah. And that was a great question, Daphne, about budget, because budget's really very important to, to all of us, and that's, I think that's been really key since the beginning. You didn't show us anything that you didn't feel you could do, budget, except for maybe the underground one, but that really wasn't-
Wasn't sure about the underground one.
Right.
I will admit that. You know, we knew there was a lot unknowns there.
Mm-hmm. Because we do have a bond that we have to keep in and keep in mind with that, so, so that's very important. And, and I think, you know, one of the reasons why we don't need to see the PowerPoint again is because it has been such a consensus, and it's been out to all the neighborhoods. And I just want to, and I know Mayor Neely, I'll still call you mayor, mentioned the great outreach, but it, it really was a good public process, and the previous commission really supported it, and the current one, and so, we're looking forward to moving into the next phase.
We think we've kind of set a precedent for Chiefs Band and Mr., Mr. Lewis for their projects, okay?
That's right. Okay. Is there any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I will move approval, or move to, how do I say this? The request to move into design development phase and public review process of the library project.
On 15-069.
On 15-069.
Push your foot, motion button. I would like to, oops.
And seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Is there any other further discussion? Dan, Katie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
All right, Sid. Good job.
Thank you.
Ready to go move.
So, next up is, okay, 7B 15-044, ordinance for introduction, approving the election results, planning file, and annexing certain property in the city. Is this the consent agenda?
No, it's an ordinance.
Well, how is the election results and annexation, oh, it's, proving the results of the election? Okay, there we go. All right. Who's, who's the staffer on this?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, once again, we are requesting approval of pos ordinance number 14-1019, approving the election results for planning file AN 1401, annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City. Five and a half acres located at 19588 South McCord Road. It was approved by the voters of Oregon City on November 4th. 7,985 in favor, 3,777 against. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Pretty straightforward to me.
Dan, I'd entertain a motion.
The city charter dictates how we adopt ordinances, and we can adopt them by title if we have unanimity, so I am going to read the title, and we will take a vote, and then we will decide where we go from there. So, if you will indulge me, this is to consider adoption of ordinance number 14-01, or, excuse me, ordinance number 14-1019, and ordinance, ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 14-01. Now, we need a motion to adopt?
Katie? Oh, I thought you said we were going to vote first.
Oh, I'll move to adopt that ordinance as so read.
And then push your button.
Second. Okay. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll.
Sure. So, Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
If the commission so chooses, we can do the second reading on this ordinance tonight, and it will take, it will be adopted tonight, and then it will take effect 30 days from adoption. So, if you will indulge me, I will read it by title again. We will have another motion and a vote. Ordinance number 14-1019, and ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 14-01.
So, I'd move second reading and final adoption of 15-044, approving the election results and annexing certain property in the city. I don't think there's any rule against the mayor making a motion.
Yeah. That's part of his rules.
Has to be one of the other commissioners.
All right. Whatever. I'll have to look that up.
I, I moved the second, oh, Daphne beat me to it. Go ahead.
I was, I was following instructions. I will move the second reading of, for approval tonight, of the ordinance for the annexation of property to the city of Oregon City.
And approving election results.
After, approving the election results. The election results aren't going to change between one minute ago and now.
It's moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Shaw, or Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Shaw.
Well, we'll get in this swing of things.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so-
Well, you better, I got-
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Oh, my gosh. So, does anybody have any desire to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
How do I, okay, request to speak.
Are you requesting this?
Well, I want to talk to, do I do, push my button?
Commissioner West?
So, I had, well, it's been a while since I've been at city council, so I don't know what policies and procedures have changed since I've been here, but, so, of these items, there were some in here that, or it was to my understanding that things on the consent agenda were under $50,000 contracts and things, and there's a couple in here, 197,000, 150,000. So, I don't know what this policy is of, you know, what the commission policy is of moving things and what sits on a consent agenda, so maybe this is something we can talk about at a retreat, but I saw nothing that is of concern to me, and I'm willing to approve the consent agenda as is if we have a discussion about what is on-
Mr. Frazier?
It's a discretion of the commission, what's on your consent calendar.
No, I, can, can you answer the, the question about dollar amounts, just so we're clear?
There's a limit on how much department heads can spend, there's a limit on how much the city manager can spend, and there is a limit on how much the commission can spend, which is your budgeted maximum. The amounts that are on your consent calendar are within your budgeted authority, and they're budgeted projects.
And within the department head's budget authority?
Well, what he's saying is a department head can spend up to a certain amount without getting the commission's authority. David can spend up to a certain amount without getting the commission's authority, but these things are in our budget and are currently budgeted items, so it's-
Commissioner West, where you may be recollecting this, is my spending authority typically is 50,000.
Yeah.
So, that could be what you're recollecting.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we're actually authorizing it by it being on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Push your button.
Second. So, motion by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, 8B 15-068, selection of on-call consultants for professional engineering services.
I'm sorry, sir, it's communications, said by the city manager.
Where did I?
That was the consent agenda.
Oh, I apologize. There we go. That was all collapsed before.
On the floor?
Oh, there we go. Okay. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, it's my pleasure to distribute to you the comprehensive annual financial reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. I have handouts for you and hard copies, and I will distribute those now. A couple of points to note, this package includes the comprehensive annual financial report that's required by Oregon budget law. It's also the annual financial report for the urban renewal agency is in that package, along with letters from our auditors that are required by their standards. I'm also pleased to announce that we have received yet another clean audit opinion on both sets of the financial statements. There were no significant findings by the auditors. The findings that they did have continue to dwindle each year that I've been here. The findings that they did have continue to dwindle each year. That I've been here, they've gotten smaller and smaller, and we're now down to, how often does somebody use the petty cash box at the code enforcement division? So I also want to say that the reports have been submitted to the Secretary of State as required by state law, and also the reports have been submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association Awards Program. As you recall, we recently, in the last couple of years, have been consistently winning those awards, and there are North American competition awards, and we've been winning those, which I think is contributing to our improving bond rating. And last but not least, I want to thank Wyatt Parnell and his finance team for another excellent job on our audit and our financial reports.
So I was hoping that you and Wyatt could walk us through this in detail?
How much time do you have?
Just kidding.
It's actually fairly concise report, because, again, because of the work that Wyatt has been doing, it's, I think, a lot more efficient report than it was previously. And then, as you know, the legislative session for the Oregon State Legislature is approaching this year, and we have updated phone numbers because we had an election, and we have contact information that I wanted to hand out to all of you. And on the contact information is all of the phone numbers and emails for the various state representatives, and so I will hand that out now, and urge you to keep this for reference, because at any time during your tenure, you may be called upon to reach out to them to attempt to influence legislation that you care about. And then, last but not least, I want to mention that my dear friend and our wonderful city recorder Nancy Ite is going to retire soon, and there's going to be a celebration for Nancy, and that's going to be Thursday, January 29th, from 4:00 to 5:30 here at City Hall. And I welcome all of you and members of the community to join us to celebrate Nancy's retirement. Nancy will be continuing on working with the city in part-time capacity, mostly from home, to help us with some of our other programs, but congratulations, well earned, and we're going to miss you. So that concludes my reports this evening, Your Honor.
I'm going to flip the B and C, because I prefer to go last, so does anybody from the commission have anything to say? And I guess to clarify, part of, I did not touch that button, part of what I expect is that everybody has assignments, and so during the couple of weeks before we come to this meeting, I assume you've been to meetings, and so if there's pertinent information to give us about those meetings, that's part of what this time is about. Commissioner West?
Yes, I have one announcement to make, and that is Monday, February 2nd, I believe, the Oregon Heritage Commission is meeting here at the end of the Oregon Trail Center, and going to vote in and approve our, the first state heritage area in Oregon. And so that's a big thing. I didn't, I'm not going to make too much about it tonight, because we'll have a lot of press releases and things for it, but it's a public meeting, everyone's welcome, it's in the afternoon. There'll be, people from the Heritage Commission will be out here in the morning touring the Legacy Project and the Blue Heron and all kinds of things out here, so it's a fun time to show up Oregon City.
What's the time on that?
One, I believe, 1:00. So look for a final, or an email from me with final times if you'd like to come join us down at the end of the Oregon Trail Center.
Commissioner Smith?
Intended the Main Street visioning, I don't know what was...
Visioning?
I think it was called that, which had, I think, most of us were there, and it was a huge turnout. I thought it was a big turnout, over 50 people, and so I thought that was a good process and a lot of great ideas for Main Street. And I think that's pretty much it. I haven't had a tourism meeting yet. One of the other things I want to say, Nancy, I'm sorry about this, but I will be attending parent-teacher conferences on the night of your...
Priorities.
They moved it. Normally, we get time, usually it doesn't start till later, but they moved it to 4:00, so we're starting conferences at 4:00, so I will not be here. But I will definitely, you know, convey my appreciation before you leave. But I want to thank you for all of your service, and I wish I could be there. And I think that's it. I don't think I have anything else.
Commissioner Polly?
Well, Rocky took my Main Street topic, but I'll expand it.
I didn't say much.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just teasing you. Yeah, the visioning session went well. There were many people that came. It was over 50, and everybody put dots up, certain things that they wanted to see the organization to do, and there was some new input, there were some new people there, and so hopefully, we can recruit some of those new people to be on committees and make the organization that much richer. So we're really looking forward to that, and then we are moving into the process of coming up with an alternate EID scenario, and so that will be coming to us sometime, and more on that later.
Mr. Shaw?
So I continue my efforts on the library building committee. That's continuing to go on there and stuff. I did have, get to, I think my second meeting on South Fork, barbecue was great as usual. That was good. And I'm not sure, I'll let Mayor Holliday probably address any of the things that kind of came up there, that I don't know if they're available to this body or not, so. And I did actually go to the traffic advisory committee last night to see what they are up to and stuff, so, and that's a great group of people there, and staff too, so anyway, it was good.
Okay, then I guess it's me. So I have a couple of things. One, we did attend South Fork last week, and I have been named the successor to Counselor Wilson in Westland to be South Fork's representative to the...
Regional Water...
Regional Water Providers Consortium, because that's a big, well-known word. So I will be missing a meeting, about three meetings this year to attend that. It's important for South Fork to remain on the executive board of the Water Providers Consortium, and so I'm going to be doing that for the first. So I will be missing the next meeting, February 4th, to attend that. Nancy, I have to apologize too. I made some schedule changes today because I'm doing something for South Fork with PGE, and so hopefully, we'll be done filming in time that I can come see you. And then I also attend the regional mayor's meeting. That's kind of an interesting group, because it tends to be mostly just the Southwest folks, so us, you know, can be Oregon City, all the way across into Beaverton, Tuolleton, and up into Hillsborough. Portland doesn't deign to show up to this very often, and a lot of the Greshamans, those guys, don't either. But it's an interesting time. It gives us an opportunity to talk directly as mayors without a bunch of staff and without anybody else in the room, so we have, you know, a chance to really just discuss issues. And one of the issues that came up this time was why C4, why W4 works in Washington County and C4 doesn't work in Clackamas County, and how maybe we can resolve those issues, and how we can work together cooperatively as mayors in Clackamas County and as mayors, as councils and commissions in Clackamas County, to work together to get a coalition to go to Metro and try to secure some of this transportation funding. So I'm working with Mayor Knapp, and Mayor Hudson, and Mayor DeReemer, and several others to see if we can't rework that so that we can have an organization that actually functions the way we had anticipated it to. I think that's it for the stuff that I did this week. Does anybody have anything further? Okay, then we're adjourned.